Okay, we're ready. You want to, yep, you want to check it? Check audio?
Yeah.
Audio check, alright, very good. This time I'd like to call it a word of the Board of Trustees Special Meeting. It is August 23rd, 2021, 6:30 PM. At this time, roll call.
Roll call, Ms. Vaughn.
Here.
Ms. Goodman.
Here.
Mr. Govart.
Here. Present, we also have Joe Schaefer, Director, Zoning and Development. This meeting of the Genoa Township Trustees will be recorded. The meeting audio and written minutes are available on Genoa Township's website, www.jenowatwp.com, or by contacting Genoa's Fiscal Office. Tonight is a work session. Basically, it provides the opportunity for the three trustees to meet with staff, the three trustees together, to meet with staff in a public meeting to talk about a potential zoning amendment dealing with the Hoover watershed. So, at this time, I will turn it over to Joe, and we can have the discussion. Joe?
Thank you, Chairman Govart. I don't have a formal presentation for the board this evening. I figured since it's a work session, probably keep it a little more informal. One thing I did want to touch upon, since you got the draft on August 10th, I've been doing some more research, and it turns out I think there's a more updated watershed boundary layer than what I used on the map that's dated August 10th that you got in the original submission and the one that's posted on the website. I was able to engage in some conversations with the Soil and Water Conservation District, and they pointed me in the direction of data that they believe was probably more up to date, which was the US Geological Survey. I had been using a dataset that Regional Planning had on file, which I think came from a different county agency, which when I sort of backtracked, it came from ODNR, but I think the data on it was from like from 1980. So, I thought, well, surely we can probably do better than 1980. So, I don't know the exact data on the USGS data, but I think it's, I want to say it's from the 90s if not later. So, before you this evening, I sat on your tables, there's an updated watershed map dated August 23rd draft. So, I just wanted to note the changes in terms of just the area we're talking about. Overall, the watershed actually got a little bit larger from the August 10th draft, probably due to development road improvements, things of that nature over time. A little bit more land down in like the Barrington Harvest Wind area got picked up. Not a lot, but a little bit. Generally, it came further south in the area of Medallion and covers much more Medallion and pretty much all of Covington Meadows and a good portion of Genoa Farms, and even creeps down into like Boulder Ridge, and I believe that's upper Cambridge there. And then you can see also, eventually, at one point, it also pulls in like the fire station and all of that section of Big Walnut Road between the fire station and our facility here. And then it sort of runs up Route 3, so I imagine, I speculate that that was some sort of road improvement there. I know it used to flood a lot through there, so my guess is there was some sort of road project at one point that's divided that water between the two different watersheds to keep the road from flooding. And then moving northward, it's relatively consistent. I think it did pick up a few more parcels in the vicinity of the Lewis, the southwest corner of the Lewis Center, Worthington Road intersection, and maybe even the northwest corner. And then it's pretty consistent up through there, I believe, right there in that Rome Corners area is almost the high point of the township, at least on this side of the water, if I remember my township geography correctly. So, going forward, I think the first order of business the board will need to do is just decide whether or not you want to use the August 10th watershed overlay boundary, which, like I said, I think is ODNR from 1980, or this, which I believe is from the mid 90s and is what's currently depicted on the USGS website. If you pull up the Huck 12, Huck is, I don't know exactly what it stands for, but it's the abbreviation for the numbers that they use to delineate watersheds. And the numbers get longer and longer as you zoom in, that drill down more and more on watershed. You know, you go from the United States watershed to like Mississippi to the Continental Divide to the Mississippi and the major water basins, you just keep drilling down, and those numbers get longer and longer. So, I believe we're at about Huck 12, which would be about 12 digits in those Huck numbers. So, we'll need to make that decision, and also corresponding with that, I probably will need to revise the text in the amendment, because right now it just says the watershed is delineated by the state of Ohio, but I like, I think it'd be a good idea that we would refine that and make it more technical, especially if you go with the August 23rd. I can specify the exact USGS data date and the Huck number, so that way there's absolutely no question what dataset we are using in terms of the official delineation. So, that's probably the big picture thing. I, like I said, I don't have a formal presentation set up to go through line by line. I think I was just going to sort of defer to the board and decide how you wanted to go through it.
First of all, the Huck stands for hydrological unit category.
Okay, thank you.
So, it is exactly like you said, it starts in, you'll even see within the Hoover watershed, there are other subwatersheds, so everyone lives in a watershed. So, you know, but I do agree that I think we need to use the Huck number. And to your point, the watershed boundaries can move around a little bit, but they are fairly stable. The other thing is the entire east side of Hoover reservoir from the township line to Hoover is in, obviously, the Hoover watershed. So, I don't know if we had talked about the east side of Hoover.
Correct, yeah, the east side didn't change because the entirety was in it on both maps. And actually, I think there's two or three Huck 12 watersheds on this map essentially. You have what essentially is the west side of Hoover, then you have, and the east side. And then you have a small section that feeds actually into Duncan's Run down in Lake of the Woods neighborhood and picks up water from Harlem, and then runs into Hoover via Duncan Run. And then there's also a small segment up by like Sage Creek that technically I think most of it flows into Big Walnut Creek, the northern section north of the reservoir, and then obviously comes down into the reservoir. So, this actually would be one whole Huck 12 section and probably parcels of two others if I read the map correctly.
So, is there any opposition or concern about using the most up-to-date version? And we'll go ahead and work from the August 23rd. We'll also make that available online.
Yes.
After the meeting, so that's, everyone's aware of what the area we're talking about. Why don't we give a little history, background, just a brief.
On the concept, yeah, I know we.
On why, why we're even talking about this tonight, how this came about.
So, obviously, there's always been a lot of concern about the development in the northern and east of Hoover reservoir portions of the township. They've always been talked about a lot in the comprehensive planning efforts over the years, and we've seen that reflected in the comprehensive planning documents and recommendations for lower densities in those areas. Obviously, over time, as case law evolves and we learn more just about the right and wrong way to do things, we realized the approach that we had under the comprehensive plan wasn't really going to be something that we could defend or was permissible. So, obviously, a few years ago, we altered the PRD, or we altered the comp plan to get rid of the specific density recommendations that were lower than the zoning resolution. And then we ultimately kept the densities the same in the zoning resolution as they had been, but then we beefed up the buffering, the open space perimeter buffers and all that stuff to create PRDs that, you know, that fit the rule, look, feel, and character better, I think, than what the code had been calling for, you know. We were still getting good plans under the old code, but a lot of it was under sort of a result of either a lot of hard work by the zoning commission and trustees asking for stuff, or the developer just by their own good graces offering some of those things. So, obviously, we thought, well, if we really want those things, we ought to just codify them, which is what we did. During that process, very early on in spring of 2018, when we were talking about, hey, how can we fix PRD, and I believe the term we were using at the time was harmonize the comp plan and the zoning resolution, one of the concepts I threw out back then was essentially this overlay concept. I pitched it to the zoning commission, they had some concerns about it, so it ultimately didn't go through, but I've always sort of kept it in my back pocket thinking, you know, yes, the PRD revisions was step one of addressing things, but I always thought that this overlay was probably step two in the final half of that harmonization effort. So, obviously, you know, over time, things happen, other items became prioritized, we got applications, focuses shifted elsewhere. So, that's why when actually we had a resident bring up this idea of maybe looking at densities again, and maybe addressing some of those concerns that have been out there for years. So, that got me thinking, and when I mentioned it, since Connie's sort of my go-to zoning person, given her vast experience on the boards over the years, I went to her first, asked her what she thought, and she thought it was a good idea to bring it up, and mentioned to me that she'd even be willing to bring it up at your meeting earlier this month, so obviously, that's what she did, and that's sort of where we are. So, again, the purpose really is to, to me, it's primarily about protecting the Hoover watershed and better sort of putting some better guidelines around what those developments need to look and function like in that area. And I selected Hoover, the Hoover watershed. Hoover, obviously, is a huge, I mean, you look at the math, it's the first thing that jumps out at you when you look at a map of Genoa Township, in my estimation. It comprises a good chunk of the acreage in the township, and the vast majority of it is in Genoa Township. So, obviously, and you know, between the environmental, the recreation, yes, it's a drinking water supply for City Columbus, tourism, it really has it all. When you, when you're thinking about all the things that zoning is trying to protect, it almost checks every one of those boxes, public health, safety, general welfare, it's got it all. So, obviously, if we were to just do Hoover itself, that's all owned by the City of Columbus, we would not really effectively be doing anything, because although it's city-owned property, that's not going to be developed. So, obviously, then we zoom out, and the next step is the watershed itself, protecting all the land that drains into Hoover, making sure that water is, you know, clean, and also protecting the rural natural character of that land that feeds into Hoover to, I think, really service the residents. A lot of people moved here because of Hoover and the natural character around Hoover. And I think it's within the general welfare and interest of the township to protect that to the best of our ability to do so under the law. So, to me, this was the only way I could think of that I felt like addressed the concerns that we've been hearing over the years on all the topics I just went over, but still be on the right side of doing what we think we can do and still be on the right side of the law. So, as I mentioned, I did bounce this off of the concept, I should just say purely the concept, not the verbiage, but the concept verbally off of the prosecutor's office and Peter Griggs and phone conversations, and they both thought conceptually it sounded like this is something that would be doable and would work. So, that obviously made me feel good that we were on the right track. And so, with that, and with Trustee Goodman bringing up, I went back to the drawing board, pulled what I had worked on, and I continued to work on it even since 2018, made some finishing touches, and that's the draft you have presented to you this evening. So, I feel like that's, you know, very big picture how we got here.
So, can you then explain the process that we're in?
Sure.
And what options are available as far as.
Sure, so.
We're not going to do anything in stone tonight.
You have, you are under no obligation to do absolutely anything tonight. This isn't a pending application, there's no procedural requirements, deadlines, timelines, you don't have to do anything. Again, since it's just a work session, all you're here is basically to discuss the document as presented and give me any feedback or ideas of stuff you think you might want to change. The path we're currently on would be if the board decides they do want to go forward and are interested in making this concept a reality, is the board would have to eventually have vote to initiate the document formally. An initiation is the same, essentially, for discussion purposes, layman's terms, service as an application to the zoning commission. A lot of times, the zoning commission is the one who actually initiates these types of documents, but the ORC is perfectly clear that the Board of Trustees have the authority to do that. And we typically don't go that route, but I think the board was in a better position to determine when it was appropriate time to start having these conversations and look at this concept. So, I think that's why it's in front of the board right now as opposed to the zoning commission. So, but tonight, we can talk, you don't have to make any motions, even if you decide you don't want to do anything tonight, you don't even need a continuance motion, you just tell me, you just leave it open-ended, you can tell me you want it on the next agenda or whatever agenda you want it on. You could initiate tonight, it's totally up to how the board feels and what the board is comfortable with. So, I am just here to answer your questions, get feedback, and make notes of any changes you want to make.
So, Joe, to clarify, if it does go forward after tonight, there will, it will be handled as any other zoning application, so there will be plenty of opportunity for public comment. There'll be, whether it's before the zoning commission, whether it's before the trustees, if a recommendation comes from the zoning. So, we're not allowing, we're not having public, and we're not allowing it tonight, public comment, but it doesn't mean that there won't be opportunities for public comment if this goes forward.
Absolutely, so the second half of the process is once the board initiates it, it does go to the zoning commission.
Right.
The zoning commission have their standard public hearings, public comment periods, everything's advertised, we won't be selling, sending mailers out because it affects well over a thousand properties.
Right.
And the law only says if it's 10 or less, you have to send the mailers out. So, we won't be sending the mailers out, but obviously, we'll be advertising, putting on the website, doing what we can, we have the constant contact mailers we can send out. So, we'll have plenty of ways to disseminate the information of what's going on out to the community, and I know social media a lot of times is now doing that job for us. But we'll meet and exceed all of our legal obligations to communicate if it's initiated, the hearings with the zoning commission, the zoning commission will review it. I imagine they'll have some thoughts, ideas, possible changes that they're going to recommend, and then once they're done with it, they'll have a vote of recommendation for the board, at which point then I take their version of the document, and I come back in front of the board, and we have the same exact public hearing, public comment periods with the board, just like we do on the rezoning and development meeting hearings. And then the board would have the final vote on it. And then obviously, during that process, regional planning, statutory is required to look at it, they'll chime in and offer their recommendations. So, yes, I think, I think the concern is will the public have opportunity to provide input on this? And yes, there'll be plenty of opportunity. I think that the decision was just tonight, we wanted the board to sort of wrap their heads around this a little bit first and decide whether or not this was something you even wanted to move forward with or even have further discussion on before we, you know, we didn't want to put the cart before the horse in terms of public discourse, but there will be plenty of opportunity for comment if this happens.
Alright, let the discussion begin, I guess. Unless there's anything else you have, Joe.
No, the only thing about the text document itself, I want to know, I realize that there's that cover page at the front of the resolution that has like all the whereas's and dates of when it began. I realize I didn't update that for this, so I'll have to add that, but that's not exactly significant. But I didn't want to forget to mention it.
If I may say one thing.
Yeah.
When I suggested this at our last trustee meeting, I think it's an important document that we look at this, it's long overdue. My bringing this up was in no way trying to micromanage the zoning commission, tell them how to do their job, us go through this line by line and hand them something that this is what we want, just give it back. I think it's important for us to look at it, give them some general thoughts, but from my perspective, I think they need to do the legwork, and I did not in any way intend to usurp their job duties, so, just for the record.
And that's fine.
That's kind of how I had planned to address this meeting as well. I don't want to go into the nitty-gritty, because we will have plenty of time to do that later.
Joe, since it does involve Hoover, and I know you have reached out to the City of Columbus, our watershed manager, Lorraine, and so I believe you're in the process of trying to get a meeting set up with her.
Yep.
To, again, it's not something the City of Columbus is going to approve, or we want to approve or anything like that, but since it is affecting Hoover reservoir, which is theirs, I think, again, the communication's going to be important there, so.
Yeah, we certainly want to make them aware of what we're thinking about doing. I'm not sure how much feedback they'll have from a zoning perspective per se, but it would be nice to at least have them say either, yeah, we think this is a good idea, or at least, the very least, that they don't have any concerns one way or the other about it.
Right, yep. Alright, what else?
That was a question on my list, so thank you.
No. One of the, just get into it a little bit, one of the questions that I had in looking at the map, we probably will still have some of those situations, I mean, really, any place where the line is, the question of a split parcel of land. You know, how does that, how does this apply to, and first of all, we're talking PRD here, correct?
Well, it would affect any development. Candidly, most of the overlay regulations are probably going to mostly impact realistically PRD, but theoretically, this overlay applies to the entire, any property regardless of what its underlying zoning district is. The question is, did we alter the standards of that underlying zoning district in the overlay?
Right.
Most of the revisions would impact what we call the planned developments, the ones that require rezoning approval from the board and get formal development plans done through the board. As drafted, it really wouldn't impact what we call the straight district, so that's the rural residential, suburban residential, community business district. There's no light industrial here. But those can continue to operate. I think the only restrictions as currently drafted that we left down those was there's maybe, there's some use restrictions, we tightened up some of the permitted uses in this district, probably eliminated most of the industrial uses, to be honest, and even on some of the commercial uses, you know. We tried to focus on uses that were more, tended to be a little more environmentally friendly, maybe not so auto-centric, a little more pedestrian neighborhood friendly to provide that more communal sort of rural feel as opposed to, you know, wanting to create a Polaris Parkway type of, you know, not that Polaris Parkway is bad, it's just not the type of character we're looking for up here.
But the question, I mean, the issue is how are we going to handle split parcels? Whether it's the 25 acre, 22 acre, or a three acre.
So, as I currently have it drafted, the overlay would impact any parcel that's wholly or partially within the Hoover reservoir watershed. And I already have that parcel, I mean, it's mapped out here, but I also had Regional Planning spit out the parcel list of everything you see here. Like I said, it's well over a thousand parcels. So, we have that list, we would know exactly which parcels we're in and we're not in. The reason I went with wholly or partially is this, it's the easiest, cleanest way to map it. And I feel like we have a legal obligation under zoning on our zoning map to be able to clearly convey to people what laws do and do not apply to their property under zoning. And to me, the problem if we did like a 20% threshold or something like that, I'm just throwing a number out there for discussion purposes, is that number I can calculate on a parcel-by-parcel basis, but we often see in developments is when a developer comes in, they're often consisting of two, three, four parcels in the development to create an entire tract. I don't know what that final tract layout is going to be, hence, I don't know what that 20% threshold is. And properties that theoretically are out could get drawn in if they're developed in conjunction with a property that's in, if it's part of the master tract. That's how it's currently written. So, I think it's just the cleanest, clearest way to do it from a mapping and communication of the law standpoint. Now, I know there's some, well, what if it's, you know, 5% and really we're going to buy all these regulations for development, then 5% and some corner that's open space? That's what the divergence process exists for.
Right.
That was, it's the almost exact reason that the divergences exist in plain developments is you can't anticipate every scenario. And it would be up to the commission and the trustees sitting at the time, an application would come in to hear that diverge, determine whether or not they wanted to grant it, which is essentially the case now. So, we're really not changing anything in that respect. And I know there are people who say, well, write in no divergences for this stuff. You can diverge the standard that says there shall be no divergences. There's just no way we can write an ironclad document. There always has to be a route of appeal or relief pursuant to statute. We have to allow people the opportunity to try to get some relief.
Well, I checked with, one of the big projects I was involved in at one time, which is somewhat similar, was the Darby Accord. And that's where the development, it was an overlay zoning, basically, that was multi-jurisdictional for the Darby watershed. And in talking with Prairie Township down there, which is one of those townships, on that very issue, they said that they have a, if you have a little bit in, you're in, and, but you can diverge. And they have had cases where there has been a small amount, you know, 20% even. The other issue that they look at is proximity in the watershed. The other issue that they look at is proximity in the watershed. So if it's clear on the very edge, that's one thing. If it's a little closer, you know, like right there along Hoover reservoir itself, it may be looked at upon differently. So it, they do provide for that flexibility, but their standard is, if you, any part is in, then you're in.
Mm-hmm.
On the flip side, you talk, I talked to the county auditor's office relative to if you have a parcel of land that is split, say, between school districts, or taxing jurisdictions, how do you handle that?
Mm-hmm.
And talking with Sherry up there, she said that basically they form a new, what am I thinking here, parcel. So they do separate that out. So if the amount of land that's in one area is taxed by that, the other is taxed. And I think you even brought up to me when, as we were talking about this, a zoning situation over with Orange Township.
Yep.
Where we, you know, had a homeowner that wanted to build a deck, and the deck part was in our township, I think, or, you know, but anyway.
The line ran like right through the property.
Yeah.
And when the home was originally built, it was over in Highland Hills, I think, it was considered part of Genoa under the way that they viewed it back in the early 2000s, I think, when this home was built. So Genoa issued the zoning permit for the home. I think it was all had to do at one point, like, if the driveway came out onto the street, and the street was in Genoa, then it was Genoa, or maybe it was like the way to where the mailbox, or, I don't know, there was, there was some sort of methodology to it.
Right.
And it's changed. So when they called, said we want to build this deck, Orange called, because they called Orange, because these people pay taxes to Orange, and, and vote in Orange elections. And Orange said, we don't have a file, a permit on file for this house, we think Genoa did it. And so, yeah, sure enough, we pulled in, yeah, here's the permit for your home. So we had to, we talked to the Broskers office about it, and they, because Orange was like, well, you know, Genoa's code isn't the same as ours, and what's allowed in Genoa wouldn't necessarily be allowed here. And eventually, what it came down to is, the home is viewed as, I think, I, I don't want to speak for Orange, but it ended up being, no, that is Orange property. The auditor's office, whoever makes those decisions, redetermined that that property is actually part of Orange. I think they now shift, it's more like an acreage, which sort of makes sense, because like, I think the vast majority of the property was in Orange. So it sort of makes sense that the tax money probably should go to Orange and not Genoa, even though it's front on the Genoa road.
So the point is, I mean, we, we have those circumstances.
Yes, they have them.
That happen. It, it's not often, but we do have them.
They do happen.
And I think, whenever you're dealing with someone's property, obviously, you need to be cognizant of that. So I think that is an issue that needs to be addressed somewhere along this process is, of split parcels, so.
Yeah, whether we want to codify it, or whether the Board just wants to sort of establish sort of a general feel.
And in talking with Soil, I talked to Soil and Water also, and they were kind of of the same opinion of moving, of putting everything under, you know, the watershed, if you have some that's in, some that's out. Now, they did admit, you can determine where on that parcel the watershed is. I mean, it's going to require a survey and...
Yeah, but it's usually pretty, pretty clear.
Yeah, it's pretty clear.
The ridge line is where you see it.
Take a glass of water out, you dump it, and it's going to go one way or the other.
Any engineer is going to be able to tell you that, so.
So there are ways of doing it, but...
And also, they have to look at all that anyway, from a storm and sewer perspective. So the engineer who's putting that development, they're going to know the answer to that.
Yeah. All right. So that was one issue for me. Go ahead. Others?
I, I just want to bring up a point. I don't know the right answer. I just want to bring it out, i- if we discuss it here, or if the zoning commission wants to discuss it. Is the best way to go about this, to have a Hoover overlay, or some sort of new zoning district? Do we put this in Article 7, or is it better to do in an appendix? I know it's a lot, but I just, I want to put all that out there.
Oh, just where it would live in the resolution?
Yeah. Where, what is the best way to do this?
In terms of where it lives, whether it's 7, or 10, or 28, probably doesn't really make a material difference, it's just more as a formatting structural preference. Candidly, I think eventually, we're going to have to probably reorganize the book anyway. So I'm not terribly concerned about where it lives, but that was like the, the debate in my office, was should we put it in 7 or 10? Because those are the two vacant sections. I didn't want to put it in 28, because that's way at the end, and like, nothing in the late 20s has anything to do with this type of stuff. So 6 through 15 in the resolution are all the zoning districts. And like I said, 7 and 10 are vacant because of the districts we've deleted. So I ultimately opted with 7. Originally, I had it in 10, but I ultimately opted with 7. I just felt like it made more sense there, because 10 is sort of the border between residential and commercial. So if we ever wanted to do like, an infill district, or a mixed-use district, I felt like 10 would probably be the better number for that area, under the current structure. Like I said, we can always change it.
But do you feel like it's better to have it as an article rather than an appendix, to have its own chapter?
Yes.
So to speak, it's better to do it that way?
Yes, absolutely. Like, an appendix would tell, would say, like, the stuff in the appendix isn't enforceable, in my opinion.
Okay.
Like, the appendix is just the history of zoning in Genoa Township. It's informational purpose, but it's not there for enforcement purposes.
As I said, I, I don't have a lot of comments on this. I did talk to Mr. Schaefer about one thing, and it, it kind of popped out at me, given our current situation with pandemics and the way the world has changed. And if, if you look back on page 7-8, we talk about that drive-throughs will not be allowed, and, and I'm in full agreement with that. But I think at this point, we probably need to define a drive, drive-through versus a curbside pickup. Because curbside pickup, you're, you still aren't getting out of your car, you're kind of driving through, but in a different way. And so that was one suggestion that I made, and he has said that maybe in the definitions or somewhere, that those be more clearly.
Yeah, I hope that's...
Worked out.
It's easy enough.
So, but that was the one thing that I thought.
I was on my to-do list of future amendment, anyway, so might as well just get it done here.
A general item I think I would like to be discussed, and I'm not going to do it tonight, but I just kind of want to put it out there for when the zoning commission looks at this. If the purpose of, of Article 7 is to preserve the area around Hoover, I think there should be more emphasis on preservation. And I know that there is more restriction on what types of boundaries you have to have, deciduous and mounding, but my view of preserve, especially when you're talking about nature, is no manicured lawn, no pesticides or chemicals, places for wildlife. I mean, this is a wildlife place, it attracts a lot of wildlife around the reservoir, and I feel like when we develop a lot of this land, we take away the habitat. So I don't know how you do it again, but I feel like if the, the whole point is to preserve the area around Hoover reservoir, let's truly make it friendly to have habitat.
Okay. Made that note.
Okay.
So what is the, okay, so you have the current zoning, and then you have this overlay, which is placed over it. So what is the additional attributes to the Hoover watershed that would be put in place as opposed to?
Sure.
And, and again, just...
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to keep a high level for you without having to read through. So essentially, what we're doing is, again, it primarily impacts the plan developments, because that's most likely we're going to see here. You're talking about increased buffers on pretty much all sides, except for maybe the street. Or no, we tweaked the street buffer, because like in the PRD, there's a, there's an exception for if you like front on our tier, or collector's street. In this, we got rid of that exception. So you're going to do that 170-foot, no matter what. Further increasing the buffers on the other perimeters, like in the PRD, you can go down as much as 50 if you're up against another PRD, and we're saying, nope, it's going to be wider than that. Beefing up the landscaping, more stringent on setbacks from stormwater basins, beefing up the landscaping requirements around stormwater basins is what we're looking at. Big setbacks from Hoover, establishing some no disturb areas in some of these setbacks. I think that sort of speaks to Trustees Von Point about the preservation aspect of it. Focusing more on native plantings. We don't like specify the exact plantings, but we do use the term native now. And, and the areas up against Hoover, again, talking about plantings that you do put in, focusing on plantings that help with like pollution and erosion and sedimentation control, to help, help with those issues, further water quality in those areas. On the non-residential side, limiting the size of the building even further to like 20,000 square feet, which is currently drafted, which essentially matches like the Red Bank Harbor building area, that's three or four tenants there at Maxtown in some area. So we don't have a ton of commercial property in this district, it's essentially Red Bank Harbor and the Lawn Center property across the street. But theoretically, could get, someone could come in, and if the Board sitting at the time was inclined to approve it, there could be additional commercial development, you know, we don't have anything in the pipeline, but someone could ask for it. Same with like planned community facilities. Some of those developments aren't residential in nature, they're, they're essentially non-residential in nature, so this would apply to them as well. Uh, let's see, I talked about the buffers, the plantings, concert, increased conservation development setbacks, increased stormwater setbacks.
You had mentioned increase in the distance between homes. I couldn't find that again. Is there?
I don't, I didn't do an increase between homes, but that does remind me what I did do.
Okay.
We have a standard in here that says, I think it's 75%, if I'm not mistaken, of the lots have to be abutting in open space. And I spell out exactly what qualifies, you know, how much of that linear frontage you have to abut, how big the open space has to be to qualify, you know, it can't just be a little 10th of an acre strip. And how much of that linear frontage you have to front to qualify towards that 75%. You know, we're not going to give you credit for a 5-foot of frontage on it. So I think that's one of the, really, the one of the big, you know, the buffer concept we had already sort of had in the PRD, we're just beefing it up. But that, that specific provision Trustee Von was alluding to, I think, is, is very unique for this standard. I guess the other thing I forgot, I was, forgot to mention is density. The current draft, as proposed, would lower the maximum permitted density in this area. So currently, under the P, I'm just going to talk about PRD, because again, that's the most apples-to-apples comparison when you're talking density, because the planned community facilities has no density restrictions, which is another thing I'll get to in a moment. So for a PRD, currently, they're allowed up to 2, without development conservation standard, or conservation development standards, 1.8 units per net developable acre. With conservation development standards, they're allowed up to 2.2. As currently drafted, before you this evening, those numbers would go down to 1.35 without conservation development standards, and 1.65 with conservation development standards. Similarly, those numbers would also apply to the planned community facilities, which currently have no density caps on them. Now, part of that is because most of the residential development that's allowed in planned community facilities is basically like senior retirement care homes like Faradine. So it's a little apples and oranges. But we still thought, you know, we probably should put a number on that for the planned community facility, because Faradine's great development, happy to have them, but I'm not sure we would want to see that kind of intense development further north and up into some of the more rural, undeveloped, natural areas of the township. So keep those along more to the main thoroughfares and more of the developed areas, because that's where they make sense, and that's where the services that they need for support are. So let's keep them down there. So that's, that's what we're looking for. I didn't want to accidentally gloss over the density, because that, that's a big component. It's not the reason we're doing this, but it's a component of what we're trying to do in protecting the Hoover watershed and the natural character of this area.
But there's also the issue of sewer.
Yes, yes.
And so those numbers are based on whether sewer is available or not.
Yeah, because you can't...
If sewer is not available, then it reverts back to what the county will allow from a...
From a septic standpoint, correct.
Septic standpoint.
Yeah, because our planned development standards usually typically require that you be serviced by sewer in order to go to planned district.
Right.
Again, or it could always diverge that, but that's historically what's been done, and we've been pretty good at sticking that, sticking to that throughout the years. So yeah, if someone was on septic, can't get sewer, they're going to probably defer back to whatever the base restriction is in terms, so for residential, rural residential, that's 2-acre lot minimums, or for suburban residential, that's 20,000 square foot lot minimums, which, if you do the conversion, comes out to about 0.45 or 6 acres.
And a couple things you mentioned, Joe, the plantings, I know the city of Columbus has some recommended plantings and for the, the strip that they maintain, either own or maintain or manage around the reservoir, in addition to some of their larger properties. So it would be good to try to make sure that we're in sync with that. The other issue is, when we are measuring, and you've mentioned several times in here, lots that contain Hoover reservoir as part of that lot, we do need to take into account, I think, that land owned by the city, because that land is going to be protected. So when we're measuring, not measure from the shoreline necessarily, but measure from the city of Columbus.
Correct. We measure from the property line, the city of Columbus, yeah, because the shoreline is too variable, depending on the time of year. Couple other things we're doing in here, lomo and no-mo areas, I know that's something we've looked at for the township properties, so I got to thinking, why don't we incorporate, because we have seen some developers that have wanted to incorporate that in that, because they're starting to get on the same train that these HOAs don't want to pay to have all this grass going. In fact, I got contacted by a neighborhood, an HOA last week, one of the existing ones, saying, hey, we're thinking about taking some of this large chunk of lane that's just sitting there that we're paying to have someone mow, that really doesn't make sense, and converting it to natural area. And I said, well, you know, we'll have to look deeper into that, but I said fundamentally, the township doesn't have a problem with it, because we're looking to do the same thing. So I thought I codify that as a, it's not a requirement, but it's an option, that if developers want to do it, we are going to allow for it, and this is sort of the rules around it, kind of thing. It's something I think that makes a lot of sense, not only from the economic standpoint for the HOA, but obviously from an environmental standpoint.
Right.
Joe, when you mentioned about the, the percentage of budding open space and the size of that particular open space, I really like that concept, because as a zoning, former zoning commission member, I remember talking about strips and bits, and adding up these little bitty part, you know, pieces next to the curb, or between the houses, or whatever. And I think specifying a minimum size is going to be crucial to this particular plan.
Yep. I think a lot of what you're seeing here drafted is a lot of stuff that we had to learn sometimes the hard way. And trying to, now we know, and we're going to make sure we don't, that doesn't happen again, and we're going to get it right next time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, let's see, density, plantings, open space, lomo. There are some lighting provisions. I'm a lot more strict on where you can actually put site lighting in the development, and how it has to be designed, with the provision that we're not going to be in the business of regulating lighting on individual homes. I'm not wanting to review permits for the light on the side of your garage, or the little coat light that you want to stick out in your front yard. Those are still totally off-the-books or landscape uplighting. I don't want to get into any of that, but this is about the, like, the big, tall street lightings that you're likely to see from neighboring properties when you drive by.
Joe, and I think maybe you even answered this for me once before, forgive me if you did, but on, as far as commercial properties.
Mm-hmm.
Hall, sheet metal over at the corner of Center Village.
Yeah, we got two of those types of developments on the other side of the water. They're actually zoned rural residential, they are completely, as far as use go, legal non-conforming uses.
Okay.
They, they, I don't know exactly when both of those businesses were there, but I know they predate the current zoning designations for those properties. That's why they're there and continue to be there, because they just, they've been there for decades.
And so, commercial would be allowed to continue there if they decided to sell?
Correct. Any commercial use in keeping with in line of what's already going on there could continue to go on there.
And not that that's a big factor here.
And that's happened, like, one of, I think the one, not halls, but the other one has changed a couple times, I think, but they continue to do essentially the same thing, so that's why it's allowed.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, I was just looking over my notes, and we really, we've talked pretty much about stuff. Uh, the petition ditch process was another one that is used in determining where a, where the watershed, a particular watershed falls.
Mm-hmm.
On a parcel, because those homeowners are assessed for that, so...
Yes, and that's a, I think the board's pretty familiar with that process. We've had one or the two of those the past couple of years, I think, Lynetta. We actually had one in this area not too long ago.
Yeah, right across the street.
So that's all done at the county level, obviously, through Soil and Water and the commissioners. But yeah, that's, that exists.
Yeah, I do. It's a little bit off topic and you can shoo me down, but I'm going to bring it up. Going to go out on a limb here.
That's what these meetings are for.
I figured it's a work session, I'm going for it. So I know that we just revised the zoning resolution. Was it January?
Uh, October. We, the latest one went into effect on Halloween.
Okay, so last fall. We took out the two car garage requirement on partials. And I'm, I'm second guessing that. And I'll tell you, it's because more storage, not for cars. But you think about how many people in the township actually use their garage to store their car? Not many. It's all for storage. So you think about eliminating that requirement. We're having, I've had a couple complaints on stuff in people's yards that don't belong there. So I'm afraid we're opening up a can of worms for where are you going to put your garbage can, your lawnmower, your, you know, just things. So I just want to put that out there, you can.
I will say.
It was in here and we took it out, correct, Joe?
It wasn't the old PRD. We took it out the la, did we take it out?
We took it out in October. Because I remember asking Joe about it and, you know.
Well, we had to take it out of PRD because PRD allows apartments and to have that standard and technically allow for apartments, you know, we can debate how likely that's actually going to be happening. We had to allow apartments somewhere though, under the code, from a housing, fair housing standpoint. So it wasn't, didn't work with allowing apartments in PRD.
Okay.
I didn't include it in this because I still think there's a, I have concerns about the fair housing argument when you start talking about that because I agree, people need more places of storage. But I think a lot of those storage issues are actually driven by the HOAs because a lot of the HOAs don't allow accessory sheds and buildings. So if these HOAs would allow those buildings in them, I don't think you'd see quite as much storage in people's garage hence. And then, and it waterfalls because people have stuff in their garage and then they're parking on the, and their driver out on the street. And then you have the on-street parking issue and you got neighborhoods that are all over the map in terms of whether they do or don't like that. So I do think some of that could be on the HOAs. They could fix that if they were loosened up their accessory structure rules just a little bit. But I do just have concerns about the two-stall garage, or the two-stall attached garage part. I'm getting tongue tied. Only because I know what we're intending to do, but I think it's too easy, too much of a softball from a fair housing standpoint. And when you start talking fair housing, you get into, automatically that discussion rolls into discrimination cases and.
So I guess.
Trying to be, we don't want to make it look like we're trying to be economically elitist or discriminatory towards lower classes. And when you talk about fair housing, they did, fair housing and lower income housing disproportionately affects minorities. So a lot of times in courts, the two sort of, the arguments go hand in hand and, you know, it's just an issue and I just assume stay away from.
Let me go get real basic here to Renee's question. So we are allowing or not allowing two-car garages?
Oh, we're allowing, we're not, we're not mandating.
We're not mandating.
We're not mandating it. That was the question, whether we were going to mandate it or not.
And you're saying that.
Well, I thought we took it out. It's no longer a requirement.
We took out the mandate, yes.
Yeah.
But if you want to do it, if you want to do a three-stall garage, as long as you meet the code requirements, great. But technically speaking, you could do a one-stall garage or a house with no garage. You could do a detached garage under, under this standard. But you could just as easily build your storage area for all the storage you need and more. And trust me, I see people build them all the time that are bigger than probably the house I live in in this area, building accessory structures. So I think, I think the avenue exists out there. And most of the, I think the junk, the storage junk properties, I don't think it's a question of lack of areas to put things. I think it's more of a question of they just accumulate too much stuff.
But, but to my point, if you have nowhere to put stuff, where does it go? That's my, my point.
Yes, I mean, I guess you'd have, you'd have to build something for yourself. I guess make sure you build yourself a house or buy a house that's big enough that provides for the storage needs. And that's why we also are allowing for accessory buildings. Like if we weren't allowed for accessory buildings, I'd probably be more inclined to agree with that because yeah, you need somewhere to store. But we are going to allow for accessory structures.
Have we had any, I mean, I'm sitting here trying to think. We've had places built that only have a one-stall garage?
The only time you ever see that is like the really old stuff. The two-stall garage requirement has been there probably since like almost the inception of zoning in Genoa Township possibly. So you're talking about stuff that was built like early 50s or before, probably you might see that. And most of those times, they didn't even have attached garages at all. They were built as detached or have no garage whatsoever.
And as you drive around the township, you might even see somewhere there's an older home with a garage that's detached and they put a breezeway between it. So it's now attached, so, yeah.
But I do know that's, I mean, you drive around neighborhoods and you see the, and I'm, from time to time in that same situation, the cars are setting out and.
Oh, trust me, I get it. All my little hobbies and everything in the garage. I, I get that, so I don't disagree with the, the storage needs.
So maybe it's something we can look at.
Okay, sure.
What else, Connie, anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I'm good. So really, I mean, if we, what I would like to see is at least one opportunity to bring it before and open it up for public comment. I think we owe that to obviously the public. I would like to bring it up at the next September meeting as an agenda item. And if we have public comment there, whether we take action at that time to move it on to zoning, we can, we can see how it goes, but any concern about that?
No, I like that idea.
In fact, you mentioned earlier that the Columbus Watershed Manager would be contacted and perhaps by then we'll have comments back from her.
Yeah.
And that would be helpful.
That's the goal.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll just, I mean, we don't have to take any formal action on that, right, Joe?
No, absolutely not.
Have you making an agenda item?
Sure, I just need to know, is there any specific? I know we talked about revision. You want me to get you a document by a certain point prior to the meeting? Like I think the deadline usually, because your meeting is what, next week, Thursday already?
Yeah, the third or fourth.
Yeah, I think it's next week. So usually Paul tries to send out the packets the Friday before, which would be this Friday. So I can try my best. I think I can get it done barring any unforeseen circumstances, you know, either here at, at home. Life with a two toddler is very unpredictable, but.
What are we talking though as far as?
Well, like the drive-through definition, clarifying, like putting the Huck numbers in, getting that cover page resolution in. It's mostly relatively minor stuff, but I would like to make sure, because if you want to vote and initiate on the draft I give you, I'd like you to have a clean draft of what that is that night. Because otherwise you're going to have to list in your initiation motion, if you were to make one next week, you know, the draft dated August 10th, 2021 with the following changes. The updated zoning map dated August 23rd, 2021. Every other change you want to incorporate and that can get sort of, I mean.
Well, and the other thing.
We've been very good about scribing all that out, I mean, but it makes it just longer and more complicated.
Right, but I, I also want to make sure that we get it on, online so that people want to download it and see it.
Yeah, I will.
They'll have a copy of it.
I can try to do my best to get it done by the end of this week, so it makes your packet.
The current version is on there and it's not going to change a whole lot.
Yeah, substantive.
Yeah, I mean, yes, the concept is not going to change.
And that's really where we're at.
I have two questions. Joe, is it possible when you make updates to this that you could blue-line the new changes?
Thank you, Connie.
Or something like that? Because then we know what's in here and we just have to look at the changes and that would probably help you too.
What I may do for this one is I may just date it with a different comment because I'll probably have to blue-line it when the zoning commission looks at it so you can tell the difference between your comments and the zoning commission's edits.
Okay.
And if I feel like if I start getting too many colors in there, we're going to like, it's going to be, it's going to defeat the purpose because we're going to lose track of what color we want, so.
The second question I have, if we're going to have public comment on this next time, is it possible to have the public comment related to this at the time that we discuss this as opposed to the beginning where we would have general public comment?
Yeah, I.
Yeah, that's totally to the board's prerogative. You don't have, you can, it's, again, it's not a public hearing, so you can.
Right.
Jeremy, you can open up the floor to public comment during your meetings whenever you feel.
And I haven't talked to Paul. I, I don't know how big of an agenda we have for that meeting anyhow.
I think we meet tomorrow internally to sort of hear what everyone wants on it.
But no, I, I wouldn't have any opposition. I don't think anyone would.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that might make it more cohesive than having the public comment and then we talk about the document later, so.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
But again, just as a reminder, even if there is, I mean, there's public comment and the board takes action, the only action we would be taking is to whether we move it on to the zoning commission or whether we don't.
Whether you want to start the formal process. It has nothing to do with whether or not you're going to adopt it.
It's not a done deal.
Correct, it's just starting the formal process is all you'd be doing.
Very good. All right, anything else, Joe?
I don't have anything else, no.
Okay, do you need to jump back on the audio stuff?